I don't think anything can survive without the marsh.
Ernest McIntosh Senior is a commercial fisherman and oyster farmer.
I mean, we have to have it. You can imagine no marsh? No, they wouldn't be right.
The marsh's value and its beauty might be taken for granted now. But in the late 60s, there was a proposal to mine Georgia's salt marsh, to dig it up, then fill it in. The fight that followed eventually led to the passage of the Coastal Marshlands Protection Act in 1970. It was a progressive law for its time, though other states now have marsh protections too. Still, Georgia, with its relatively small coastline, has about a third of all the salt marsh on the east coast, close to 400,000 acres. And all that marsh is helping Georgia adapt as the sea level rises.
It's very incremental. It's very slow.
Jill Andrews is with the state's Coastal Resources Division.
We'll get these calls of somebody calling and saying, "I just don't understand why I have all these fiddler crab burrows in my vegetable garden," or "they weren't there before." You know, we hear that again and again. "It wasn't there before."
She says it's not only marsh animals like fiddler crabs. People also see salt marsh plants moving into their yards. Sometimes it's more acute, like during the highest tides of the year. Megan DeRozers is the executive director of the Georgia Environmental Group 100 Miles.
You can't cross roads. Sometimes you can't even go outside.
She says one time, the tide got so high it affected her commute.
I had to walk through water. I'd take off my shoes, hike my pants up, and walk through water just to get to my office door. And it was a sunny day.
In Georgia, climate change is causing sea levels to rise by about 3 millimeters a year, which may not sound like much, but it adds up.
3 millimeters per year is about a foot per century.
Clark Alexander is a coastal geologist at the University of Georgia.
We have data for the last 80 years. It shows us that sea levels have been steadily increasing.
By about 10 inches so far, and they'll continue to do so, and likely at a faster rate in the future. And Georgia's marshes, they can move too.
Our marshes are able to migrate under the uplands.
And the 50-year-old Georgia law that protects the marshes follows them. The way the law works, you can't develop or fill in or drain the marsh without a permit. For those permits, you need to first figure out where the marsh is. And one way the state does that is by checking for certain marsh plants. Wherever they are is considered marsh. Jill Andrews with the Coastal Resources Division.
So to that extent, the Marsh Act can be responsive.
Basically, as sea levels move, the salt marsh moves, and the law moves too. But this isn't just about the salt marsh being protected, because the marsh itself buffers Georgia from sea level rise.
So the marshes play a very important role in protecting what's on the upland here in Georgia, particularly right along the edge of where the water and the land meet.
Clark Alexander with UGA says the marshes slow down water that might otherwise flood into dry areas. They also absorb waves. Without the marsh, powerful waves from storms would slam right into the land and erode it away.
As opposed to nowadays, where we see a lot of that wave energy being absorbed by the marsh grasses, just waving back and forth and knocking the wave energy down before it reaches our shorelines.
Georgia is working on ways to adapt to and prepare for increasingly high tides, asking local governments to plan for sea level rise and protecting open space so that the marshes can keep moving inland. But Megan DeRozers with 100 Miles says there will come a time when the marshes and the 50-year-old law that protects them come so high up.
The 2:00 PM Roanoke City Council regular session is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk, Ms. Suzie McCord, to please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Jeffrey? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Here.
And Mayor Lee?
Here. And a call, Mr. President. To this afternoon, I will be delivering the invocation, and following the invocation, I'll also lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance. So I'd ask everybody to stand. Eternal God, our Father, we come to you first and foremost to thank you for this day. Oh, we recognize that we're here today because of your grace and your mercy. And we ask you to guide and direct us as elected and appointed officials as we go about the business of this city and this valley. And Lord, I ask a special prayer today for the family of Bishop Malbert Simpson, the longtime pastor of Spirit of Liberty Church here in the city. Strengthen and encourage him as they go forward. And Lord, let them know that you are forever with them as they go through this period of grieving. And Lord, we ask you to continue to bless our city and continue to make your vision and your spirit move in a mighty way. Thank you for all that you have done and continue to do and will do as we go forward. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you so much, and again, welcome to our evening session. And it's good to be back again in council and to have you all come in to be here. And we just hope and pray that this continues. I know that the Delta virus is really making an impact across the country. And so we ask those who have not been vaccinated to please get vaccinated and to urge you to be cautious as we go about our day-to-day lives. But it's good to be back in session, full session again. Today's council meeting will be televised live and replayed on RV TV Channel 3 on Thursday, July 8th, July 8th and 10th at 7:00 PM and Saturday, July 10th at 4:00 PM. Video stream through Facebook Live at facebook.com/roanokeva. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the hearing impaired. The Council of the City of Roanoke has some announcements to make, and we're seeking applications for the following current vacancies and/or upcoming expiration of terms of office. The Architectural Review Board has one vacancy. The Board of Zoning Appeals, one vacancy. Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Arts Commission, one vacancy. The Roanoke Civic Center Commission, three vacancies. The Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, one vacancy. The Roanoke Public Library Board, two vacancies. The Touring Advisory Board, one vacancy, and that is the position of a citizen at large. So for any and all of these vacancies, you can access the city's homepage for an online application and also call the clerk's office. But we, as a council, encourage you to come forward, to be a part of helping us govern the city. So we welcome applications for boards and commissions, and we review those every month. So please take an opportunity to do that. All right, we're going to go down now to Agenda Item 2, which is the Presentation and Acknowledgement. And I have a proclamation to be handed out, and I'm going to ask Ms. Stephanie Long, Marketing Coordinator of Parks and Recreation, to join me at the podium. Welcome, Stephanie. Ladies and gentlemen, this is Park and Recreation Month. And Stephanie, we're delighted to have you here with us today to receive this. This proclamation reads, "Whereas active living experiences provide opportunity for young people to grow and develop into contributing members of society and for adults to create continuous life experiences. And whereas parks and recreation agencies provide outlets for physical activities, socialization, and stress-reducing experiences and generate opportunities for members of the community to come together through fun-filled recreational pursuits." And I like this "stress-reducing experiences." That's enough right there. Yeah, I mean. Whereas parks, playgrounds, ball fields, nature trails, open spaces, community and cultural centers, and historic sites make communities attractive and desirable places to live, work, and play, and visit and contribute to an ongoing economic vitality. And whereas parks, greenways, and open spaces provide a welcome respite from our fast-paced, high-tech lifestyles while protecting and preserving the natural environment. And whereas parks and recreation agencies touch the lives of individuals, families, groups, and the entire community by positively impacting the social, economic, health, and environmental quality of the community. Now therefore, I, Sherman P. Lee Senior, Mayor of the City of Roanoke, Virginia, encourage all citizens to participate in their choice of active living experiences to find refreshment and renewed vitality. And do hereby proclaim the month of July 2021 throughout this great, seven-time All-American city as Park and Recreation Month. So thank you. And I want you to say a few words. Let me say something.
You do? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry if I ramble. I was not prepared to speak. But I just want to thank you all so much for recognizing Parking Recreation Month. As the proclamation reads, we feel it's very, very important to have a city that's focused on play, especially with a lot of the stuff that we're dealing with right now as a community. Having healthy recreational opportunities is incredibly important. So we hope that everyone comes out and enjoys the stuff that we've got planned. We have things in all four quadrants of the city. Mostly, everything is free to try and remove any barriers. So hopefully, you all will join us for some of the events we have planned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're down to the next Agenda Item, which is the Hearing of Citizens Upon Public Matters. City Council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. If deemed appropriate, matters will be referred to the city manager for response, recommendation, or report to council. And speakers will be in person. Having signed up, slips will be given to them prior to the start of our meeting today. And we do have one speaker.
That's right.
That, is it virtually, or are they here?
They're here.
Okay. I want to welcome Ms. Jeanette Morris. Come on in, Jeanette. Jeanette lives at 2012 Sanford Avenue Southwest here in Roanoke. And she wants to talk about fixing our streets' curbs and drains and requested enforcement of the city code. Welcome, Jeanette.
Welcome you. Mr. Lee and to City Council, I just want to thank you all for listening to what I have to say. And I've sent the pictures for you all to look at. These pictures were just recently taken in our city, and I wanted to see what we can do to fix it so that it doesn't happen in the city anymore. The first picture that you see is on Franklin Road. It's weeds that's been cut down. The second picture you can see was cut down. If you look today, it's still laying out in the street. It looks like a weed field on the second picture there. I've been complaining for four years, pretty much, about this issue being that people cut their grass and just leave it out in the street, sidewalks, as you can see in the pictures. And we have codes for that, but evidently, the codes haven't been enforced. I spoke with the code enforcer that informed me we have codes on the books that they don't enforce. And as you can see, that's what's happening, just not in my part of this town. It's all over the city. Like I say, Brandon Avenue, if you go down Brandon Avenue headed towards Salem, you can see that we can't even see our curbs, that the grass is overrun. And this is something that the citizens, I think, could do their part. It is a code that they, you know, have to maintain that right of way, your sidewalks and your curbs. When you cut your grass, you don't leave it out there, in there, to wash down the drains. So this has been going on for quite a while. That's a lot of grass washing down into our drain system, and it just doesn't look good. This was the 4th of July. It's right down from where I live. I mean, and it's just a disgrace to see people, businesses. These are a couple of businesses in here that think that that's okay. I don't know if it's, they think the city should do it, and they just cut the grass and decide to leave it like that. But I don't think this is where our city should look. It's all over the city. I mean, anywhere you go, this is just, you know, some of the shots of some of the worst things that I have seen. And I was just wanting to come down here, because, you know, I heard that we're getting a little bit of money, that we can address this problem. Mainly more code enforcers, because it seems to be we need code enforcement more that can see this and address it. And then just make the citizens of Roanoke aware that this is their duty. And I'm pretty sure it is from what I've read on the codes. And that, you know, it'd be fixed. And most of it can be done with just the citizens doing their part, if they are informed that this is part, you know, to do. I don't know if any of you all remember Darlene Bercham, when she was our city manager here. She moved to, I think it was Covington, and they had the same issue. They were cutting the grass, leaving it out there. And she endorsed something like fines for the people that did this. And I'm pretty sure it helped take care of that matter. So that's what I'm here today, just to speak, show you the pictures, and see what can be done to make our city more beautiful, make it more appealing for people that want to come here and live, and people like me that live here not to have to look at it. So thank you for your time, and hopefully, we have some money in the budget somewhere to address this problem, mainly, I think, with education to the people here in Roanoke that this needs to be done on their part, because we can't afford to do it, you know, for everybody to clean up. But one of these things I had complained about about a month ago, and the person wasn't cited for it. The city came out with their cleaning vehicles and cleaned up this mess. But that should have been someone fined for doing what they did, you know, unless that's the way we want it to look. So thank you for hearing me, and hopefully, we won't see this matter, you know, on our streets again. Hopefully, we can get it taken care of. Thank you for listening to me today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. All right, we will refer this to our city manager and ask him to please follow up on this matter. And you'll hear from our city manager on this. Thank you for coming down. All right. All right, we're now down to Item Number 4, which is the Consent Agenda. All matters listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the members of City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items. If discussion is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. I need a motion for the Consent Agenda.
So move.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffrey? Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the Consent Agenda is approved. Thank you. All right, Item Number 5 under the Regular Agenda is Public Hearings. And we have no public hearings this afternoon. Item Number 6 is Petitions and Communication. 6A is a communication from the City Treasurer recommending acceptance of the reimbursement of a licensed agency of DMV, which is DMV Select, and a communication from the city manager concurring in a recommendation. There is a budget ordinance.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to appropriate funding from the U.S. Department of Transportation through the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Motor Vehicles to be a licensed agent called a DMV Select Office, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 General Fund and Grant Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Any discussion by members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. All right, Item Number 7A, reports of city officers and comments of the city manager. We have items recommended for action. Again, 7A1 is approval of Human Services Advisory Board allocation of funding to various nonprofit agencies for fiscal year 2021 and 2022, and execution of a contract with the Council of Community Services to conduct performance audits. And we're looking at two measures, a resolution and a budget ordinance, and I ask for a motion on the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, can you please read the title paragraph?
A resolution approving the recommendations of the Human Services Advisory Board for allocation of city funds to various qualified agencies to assist such agencies in the performance of their programs for fiscal year 2021 through 2022, and authorizing the city manager or his designee to execute a contract with the Council of Community Services to perform the necessary performance audits to evaluate the effectiveness and efficiency of all the funded programs by such agencies.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. There's a budget ordinance.
Move the budget ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to transfer funding to specific Human Services Committee agencies, amending and re-ordaining certain sections of the 2021-through-2022 General Fund Appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
All right. Any discussion by members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. Item Number 7A2 is approval of the Roanoke Arts Commission allocation of funding to specific arts and culture agencies for fiscal year 2021-2022. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution concurring with and approving the recommendations of the Roanoke Arts Commission's allocation of city funds to various nonprofit agencies for fiscal year 2021 through 2022.
All right, is there any discussion, members of council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Bestfitch?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you all.
Move the budget ordinance.
All right, is there... Is there a second on the budget ordinance?
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
An ordinance to transfer funding to specific art commission agencies, amending and reordaining certain sections of the 2021-2022 general fund appropriations, and dispensing with the second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from members of council? Seeing or hearing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the budget ordinance passes. Thank you. All right. I'm pleased now to recognize our city manager for any comments that he'd like to have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a few items. Obviously, with the city offices being closed yesterday, of course, our solid waste collection schedule changes. As always, it will be delayed by one day. Additional information certainly can be secured on the website, as well as, if necessary, calling the solid waste folks. Also want to announce, and I know you all already know this from previous announcements, but that the 38th Annual National Night Out is scheduled. It will take place on August 3rd. That's a Tuesday evening. And Roanoke will be participating in the celebration along with other communities and neighborhoods across the nation. Of course, last year, we were able to do that only very lightly, mostly virtually, but this will be much more akin to what we have done in the past. Neighborhood groups wishing to plan events for the celebration should visit the city's website, and there's some additional information associated with that in terms of planning the event. They can also contact Josh Johnson, the Neighborhood Services Coordinator, by either email or phone to get additional information regarding that. Again, that is Tuesday, August 3rd, and certainly, as the schedule starts to firm up, you all will be provided more information regarding that schedule. And then a couple of other announcements that I want to make as well. You all know from previous discussions and in our update that I had initiated the Assistant City Manager Apprenticeship Program, and that started actually on July 1st, so basically this week. And we'll be doing this for a few years, and part of this effort is to, is a part of our succession planning and some of the professional development within the organization. We went through, we'll go through cohorts a couple of years in a row. We went through the first cohort, and I'm happy to say that Chris Chidham, who's in the back there, was selected for, to be our first. And so for two years, he will serve in that capacity as the Assistant City Manager Apprentice, which in his case simply means he gets to do two jobs now instead of just the single. But he will retain his responsibilities with the Planning Department, although there will be folks within the department elevated for covering some of those responsibilities as well. He will physically be housed in the city manager's office and will be assigned various responsibilities within the manager's office. So he will do that for two years, start it this week, and then will return back to the position that he had previously as the Planning Director. And then Angie O'Brien actually has been selected as the second person in that group. So she will begin this time next year. And in June of next year, we will interview again for the next two folks, and we'll do that till we probably get five or six in total. That'll be the extent of the program as we go forward. I believe we had five folks within the organization that had competed for that position that resulted in Chris's and Angie's selection. Also want to, and you all, of course, were a part of this, and I appreciate your work on this and your support, but the Star City Strong Phase Two effort, this, of course, is the effort we're going through to engage with the community as we work toward recommendations regarding the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. We have concluded the focus group meetings. There were, I think, eight in total with those. Each of you, of course, led one of those. And at your meeting, your next meeting on the 19th, we'll have a report, both, you'll have a report that accumulates all of that together, and then I'll ask each of you to briefly highlight some of what took place within your particular focus group that you led as well. There were also, there was, I believe, one focus group that, actually, I led that was consisted of our leadership within the organization that I'll brief you on as well, but it'll all be incorporated into that as well. I also have a number of stakeholder interviews that have been completed. They'll be a part of that. Most of those came actually from, some of it, you all provided information, but the rest of it actually came from members of the Star City Strong Recovery Fund Advisory Panel that we used last time. So they were asked also to provide responses to a number of questions similar to what you all asked in your focus group meetings. That will be a part of that as well. Also, it should be next week, I think, if not this week. We will start posting notice for folks that are interested in serving on the next advisory panel. Certainly, we'll let you all know when that's ready to go out, and we'll get that information out for folks to make application. And it is my intent to have, over the next couple of weeks, we'll look for probably two sort of open town hall meetings, most likely still conducted virtually, but that anyone can join in and answer some of the same kinds of questions that you all led the focus group meetings on. If all goes according to plan, that positions us for your meeting in July 19th to be able to make appointments to that panel. That depends on getting the information out, getting enough applications and so on, but right now, that is the tentative timeframe. That would result in the panel actually meeting in late July and then throughout August. And again, the objective is to have recommendations coming to you all, probably in late September is when I would anticipate that that will take place as we go forward. There'll be a lot more information at your meeting on the 19th about the rest of the process, but I wanted to at least continue to kind of keep you updated on where we are and kind of what comes next in the process. So those are my updates, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Cowell, I just have one question.
Sure.
On the apprentice program, are there any prequalifying criteria or something that an individual have to meet, and where would they find that on the website? Somebody asked me.
Yeah, it was actually posted for jobs because it was inside, so it was only open to our internal candidates.
Oh, so it's only internal, okay.
And it was, but we still did it just as we would any other kind of promotion opportunity. So the job requirements were posted, and it was really recruited from within our directors, as well as there's a couple of folks, Angie being one of those. We have some folks that run, for example, the contract manager or enterprise manager over the Hotel Conference Center and Park Roanoke was, is one of those positions. So there are probably about 15 to 20 people probably eligible. What I'll, as we go forward in the program, will determine whether it makes sense to open that up wider or not, depending on interest in the program. Because again, part of the goal is that with those two years, they should be prepared at that point to compete for a future Assistant City Manager position, but it is only internal candidates for this program.
But they don't necessarily have to be a director, right? Because Angie is not a director.
Correct, correct.
Okay, because somebody asked me about it, and I said, I thought they had to be a director, and they said they were told that they had to be a director.
Yeah, the preference is directors, and then there's a collection of other folks that with preapproval can compete for the position as well.
And you would do the preapproval?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions of the city manager? All right. Well, let's move to item eight. It's reports of committees. We have none. Item number nine is unfinished business. We have none. Introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. None. All right, item 11 is motions and miscellaneous business. So inquiries or comments by the mayor and members of city council. Does anybody have any miscellaneous information, motions? Any thoughts on things that you're doing?
Well, I could just mention, it's not a report, so I will report formally about the EEAB and our recommendation. We met on Thursday, and as you all know, we are trying to formalize our recommendation for Lee Plaza. And I intend to recommend both Henrietta Lacks and Star City Plaza. Henrietta Lacks because she got the most in the survey, she got the most in the public hearing, the emails and the phone calls, and in second place was Star City Plaza. The committee had a very, very difficult time trying to decide if they would recommend one or the other to council, so we will be prepared to make a formal recommendation for both, I guess, at the July meeting. And also, we're doing so much. There was a recommendation by the co-chair, Rabbi Cohen, that we report, the subcommittees report every other month so that we would have a chance to hear all of the reports in depth because there's so much to absorb in one meeting. So the subcommittees will be reporting rather than monthly now. They will report every other month, and I think we decided, what, two and three, Mr. Cowell?
Yeah, I think it was, because there's five in total. I think we'll do three the first month, and then next month we'll do the other two.
Next month do two, because this will allow us a chance to really get engaged and involved with what the subcommittees are doing, and you guys are just going to be blown away when we tell you what we're doing. But I'll save that.
Okay. Well, I thought there was a third name that was mentioned. Got some votes.
Well, I'm sorry to say that Lee, L-E-A Plaza, did not make the cut. And I am so sorry, sir. We tried our best, but it just did not, didn't cut the mustard, as they say.
Well, I'm sorry for Lee didn't make any cut. It's a tough thing to take since our life grows.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant to break that to you earlier. Yeah, gently. That's what this box of candy was for, and I forgot to tell you.
All right. All right, Vice Mayor and Mr. Best Pitch, and you all who are on this EEAB committee.
Yes, sir.
I'll keep you in mind as we go down the road. But anyway, thank you for that report. Vacancies on certain authority boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. Let me just ask one thing. I think Councilman Cobb is doing a good job. He and I had a chance to go and talk to DRI a few weeks ago with the presentation. And I thought it went well, at least is very informative. People found out a lot of things they don't know, don't know about what we're doing in the city with regards to gun violence and other issues. I would hope that, and I'll leave that up to you, Joe, to share. When you have those presentations, I think if a council member has the time, if they could come by, I think it always helps reinforce some things that you're doing. You do a good job, but I don't, I prefer not to be, you be the lone ranger out there. I think if you can, let us know when you're having those so we can join you and just to show up and people can see us there, being a part of it, because I think it's a good presentation. I think the more we can be seen, and this council does a great job in doing that. I mean, really, we are at most things that are in the community, but I think that's good because we're all focused on gun violence and what we're doing in our community. And there may be some things in that presentation that, you know, some of us may not be aware of that's, that's going, a lot of good things is going on. So first, thank you for that and your group, and hopefully, some of our colleagues will be able to make it out to some of those meetings that are in the community.
I appreciate that, Mayor, and I always try and keep in mind that when there are more than two of us at a meeting, it's a public meeting. And so just, but that being said, there were about 35 businesses that were there, and they were able to reflect on issues like lack of lighting in certain parking lots, collective loitering from people not patronizing downtown businesses, how to address security. But there was a lot of good energy around businesses wanting to be, just continue to be successful, and how can they work with downtown Roanoke, Inc., as well as the city to help that happen? One of the takeaways that I heard was that, I think particularly for newer business owners downtown, they aren't fully aware of all the city services that are available to assist when they do have issues. So communicating those is really important. I think, you know, there's an ongoing issue around people experiencing homelessness and encampments that are kind of developing, and how best to address that. I know our HAT team is very proactive in that regard. And at least of these ministries kind of covers a lot of that in the evenings, but it's an ongoing challenge that I think we have to be really creative about. The other thing I heard, which I would just say to citizens, you know, one of the things that has really changed during COVID is the lunch crowd. There, when people were going to work downtown, they were having lunch downtown. Well, a lot of people are not going to work downtown because they're working remotely, and they're likely not to return to onsite work, and so that's really had a profound impact on lunch business. Weekend business has been really strong, but lunch business has been way down, and for, particularly for restaurants who rely on that, it's very challenging. So I would just encourage citizens to think about during the week, as well as the weekends, to really get out and support these businesses, not only the restaurants, but retail as well, because they rely on that, and it's important. But Tina Workman, who's with DRI, we met this last week, and we're finishing up kind of a summary of what the businesses shared in terms of concerns and what recommendations they had, and I'll share that with council once it's done.
Thank you.
Fitness would be for our attorney, Mr. Spencer. When Mr. Cobb does something like that, would that be considered a public meeting? I mean, he's just doing a presentation so other members of council couldn't attend? I mean, because some of us would have gone down there to hear what the businesses.
Actually, there's a case that came out of the city of Fredericksburg where if council members attend and are invited to another organization's meeting, more than two can appear. And the Supreme Court of Virginia held that as long as council is not the one driving the agenda, then they can attend. They're just like any other citizen at that point. Of course, I will, being an attorney, always want to caution, to make sure that you are acting like a regular citizen at those meetings and not a council member necessarily to take over the agenda, so to speak.
Oh, I just wondered.
But there is that case that the Virginia Supreme Court has made that decision. You are welcome to attend a meeting such as DRI holding a meeting with its members and invited. If they invite council members, you're more than welcome to attend.
And so you all are invited to my fish fry, every one of you.
I appreciate that clarification, and my apologies to council. It wasn't my intention to exclude anybody. It was just to, as a part of the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, to reach out to the businesses because of the shooting. So knowing that, DRI, because they hosted the meeting, could have invited everybody.
Could have invited everyone, as long as it was a DRI run.
Right. Going forward, I will.
Right. Now, if it were the Gun Violence Commission holding that meeting, then you're 100% correct. That would be then a subcommittee of council running a meeting.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you for clarifying that, because I was saying it's just not Mr. Cobb, but for all of us, a lot of times are doing different things, and we think the same way. And so I'm glad we were able to clarify that.
Sure. Thank you.
So you advise me not to speak at these meetings when you go there?
But absolutely attend.
Okay.
Just keep your mouth shut.
You can speak if it's their meeting, as long as it's their meeting.
Okay.
Okay. All right. But again, thank you all. All right, next item is certification of closed meeting. Mr. Best Pitch, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move with respect to any closed meeting. Just concluded that each member of city council in attendance certified to the best of his or her knowledge that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Thank you. Just a second.
Second.
All right. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy.
Aye.
Mr. Best Pitch.
Aye.
Mayor Lee.
Aye. And thank you. All right. Appointments and reappointments. I'm going to call on, Ms. Best Pitch, to share with us the appointments and reappointments, and once those names are placed in nomination, then the clerk will call the roll. And if you're in favor of it, please let us know by stating all nominees.
For the Architecture Review Board, the nominee is for reappointment of Bill Mason. For Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare Board of Directors, the nominee is a reappointment of Lou Bishop. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, the nominee is the reappointment of Betty Jean Wolfe. For Economic Development Authority, the nominee is the reappointment of Duke Baldridge. For the Human Services. For the Human Services Advisory Board, the nominee is the reappointment of Erica J. Bergen. For the Personnel and Employment Practices Commission, the nominee for appointment is Stuart Trinkle. For the Roanoke Neighborhood Advocates, the nominees for reappointment are Sunny Perviance and Rochetta Chase, excuse me, and also the appointment of Jordan Bell. And for the Roanoke Public Library Board, the nominee is the appointment of Dorothy Yancy. For the Roanoke Redevelopment Housing Authority, the nominee is the reappointment of Drew Kepley. And for the Roanoke Valley Broadband Authority, the nominee is the reappointment of Michael McAvoy. Those are all the nominees we have for today, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. I'm going to ask our clerk to call a roll on those nominations and if you're, again, in agreement, please vote all nominees. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Cobb?
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
All nominees.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
All nominees.
Vice Mayor Whiteboy?
All nominees.
Mr. Best Pitch?
All nominees.
Mayor Lee?
All nominees. Thank you all. All right, Mrs.? Okay. There being no further business set forth to come before the council, the regular session of city council is hereby adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.